Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the city council meeting to order for Monday, June 2nd, 2025. At this time, we are going to begin with prayer. If Pastor Scott Paisley from Cavalry Baptist Church can lead us.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we are grateful for the privilege we have to come into your presence. Thank you for caring for us. Thank you, Father, for being interested in the affairs of our lives and of this city and of this meeting. We thank we can ask you for wisdom and that you give it to us liberally. We thank you for our mayor. Mayor Curtis, we pray for his administration, for this council, for our city, for this night, the business that needs to be tended to. Give direction, we pray, and wisdom and discernment. We thank you, Lord, for our police department, our fire department, all those who serve, first responders. We thank you for those who are willing to lay their lives on the line every day for us. Father, we just desire your good hand to be upon Kankakee. Bless the tonight, the business that takes place, or the year ahead. We're thankful that you're always there for us. Help us, Lord, to lean hard upon you and to look for you to guidance. And thank you for your faithful presence and your care, we pray in Jesus' name.
The city council will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as
At this time, we will begin with public comment. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon council members, staff, or other persons, in attendance or absent, will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matters which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Mr. Elickin Snipes.
The mayor and the members of the city council. I am here because there's a leak in my roof and I had it, had them come in to repair the leak and I decided to go to the count, to the code to get a permit. Not that I think I needed, but I went anyway. But going up in there, they said they had two lees on my property. Said that they cut my grass two times or whatever and gave me some date about four or five years ago that they cut it. And so I told them and they told me that they had pictures or whatever. So when I asked for the pictures, there's no pictures. Now, I know you cut Reverend Johnson's, which is next door, but you've never cut my grass, ever. So my thing was, and then they said they had a lien on my property. If there's a lien placed on anybody's property, they have a right to due process and to notice. That was never done by the city, not one time. And so therefore, they hold you up, then they tell me, I talked to the gentleman at your office, he said you can come by Wednesday and get a call. Nevertheless, after looking in Illinois to determine whether the city under home rule has the authority to ignore the laws and just basically a not, it says, no, you have to provide due process and a notice before placing a lien. And it tells you about the 15-day notice. But you all should know all of that because it's in the state statute and you took a oath of the Constitution of the United States and the state of Illinois. So therefore, that has not been done. And then, then it rained three days and so therefore, we got to wait on a code enforcement. They come up, I said, well, give me the, what the lees are. Then come to find out, it's some other lien other than the lien that they were talking about. They said, oh, where's the grass on June 4th and June 8th or something of that nature? I never got that, what they told me on the phone. Then they told me that I have a sewer and trash bill or whatever and that the city put a lien, again, never notifying me as far as that's concerned. And then I told them, I don't know who is in that office, but you're a liar. There's no way. I challenged that back when they claimed that we owed it. That was during the transition when the code was over at the depot and Jan Gathings and them was there. And so they were switching over to Aqua. So I basically paid my bill to Aqua. Aqua turned around, I challenged it, they verified it, it was gone. It's not even on my particular bill. My bill, when I called them, said it's been paid. Ever since the regional director did that, and that's been up 10 years ago, when I was at the depots before your time, being mayor here. So I'm asking, how does the city put a lien on my property? Then you put a lien on my property that prevents a sewer. Now, if any water damage happens beyond this point, the city's going to have to turn around and pay it because it's time to deal with the city. Because my thing is, you do what you have to do and then all of a sudden, you abrupt it because somebody puts lees that you have not been notified, period. And I don't care who the lawyer is, if they told you that you'll need a due process, let me know because I'm a father ad hoc and fight against them, period. They have a duty to basically inform you legally and according to the law. So if you think that it's an upset thing or whatever, it's more than upset. You don't let this water just fry in people's houses or whatever on some garbage that has never ever, you don't, one, you haven't been noticed because I would easily have been able to fight that at that particular time because Aqua and them took the inventory and contacted the city. That was settled. My bill has been paid, they says, no, we have, you've been paying your bill for the last 10 years, we don't, that's no record, it was resolved. And I said, then how did the city put a lien against my property? They said, you have to ask the city. So now, we're in a situation or whatever that I'm being held up for something that the city, for one, they didn't even follow the law. I should have at least been notified. First, if nothing else, you want to know I'm going to show up. So, other than that, the, this, that grass cutting thing, I don't know what you do because I had people cut my particular grass. And they stated that we've always cut it, so I wanted to see the pictures from the city that you cut my grass. Now, you sent me one thing saying that the thing was up, but that's when it was raining four days and a dandelion came up, but they cut it. The people said, you can't cut wet grass. They would, and they cut it the next two days when it got dry. Other than that, I had, and it wasn't the city that cut it, it was the service that cut it. So if I'm paying money to them or whatever and the city says that they, I got $199 for them to cut my grass, I need to know where their pictures are of them cutting my grass? If not, get rid of this stuff so these people can do my roof. Otherwise, we got to wind back up to a court or whatever. This time, it's beyond negligence. We got five cases with this city. They're just doing what they want to do. People have rights and you have a duty to follow those rights. And when I was working as a commissioner, I made sure, for the most part, that when people's rights were the bridge, that we were in compliance, making sure that what we were doing was proper. If not, we turned around and corrected that issue. First, we have $300, $500 to be going over to the courthouse for every little case on something that the city is doing. So I'm asking that you all look at those particular lees or legal system and either give me the proof or get rid of them so that I can get my roof done. But nevertheless, before it rains again, I'm going to get it done or whatever and we're just going to have to fight.
Next up is Dr. Walker.
So I want to tell you kind of where I live at. So where I live is three creeks, right? So the first creek is Maple to Country Club. No, yeah, Country Club. The next creek is Country Club to Pearson Park. The third creek, which is the smallest creek, is directly in front of my house. And so I have been asking, they didn't come last year, but year before last, I had asked and they would come and mow the creek in front of my house. Now, the general would be on their electric, they're riding moors and mow the, two big creeks with no problem and they bring the big trucks that drain the ducts and all of that, right? But it seems to be a problem with the smallest creek, which is in front of my house. So the neighbor that used to live across the street, she has a house that, the house is here and the driveway goes under and it would flood and you'd see them take their stuff and put it on her because it's done, it's, it got wet, right? And so she had been complaining and then came down here, I guess, and you guys came and the city came and did something about it. And she looked up and you all had, took the fence down, well, the city, I guess, had took her fence down, went behind the fence, started opening the creek up. And she said, you can't go down there and open my creek up. And they said, yes, we can. We're calling the Kankakee City eminent domain. So this is our creek and we're going to open, take this land and widen it. Well, since that time, it has closed back up. And so what I'm asking is, because what they do is they bounce it back and forth to it. The city says it's the park district, the park district says it's the city, but whoever it is for those two big pretty creeks, they make sure they, it's mowed and it's real pretty, but that one is not in front of my house. My house runs the lowest, right? So like, let's say, Paul, you know, Mother Nature, she, she rains September, October, November, and now the leaves are wet, the sun come out, dried out leaves, and all those leaves crowd in that small creek. Well, what does that do? It runs the water over to me. It kind of got better because the previous administration, she came and actually looked at it, right? And so she brought whoever that is that does road stuff, street stuff, and they said, aha, I know what they need to do. So they still had the two drains on this side, but now they put two drains on my side. So my husband, who's almost 75, gets out here, he ain't no city worker, but he gets out and he rakes those drains and keeps some soap because we know this water will come back to us so far up into the driveway and into the garage, right? Well, now, I'm being told that where the creek is, somebody bought the creek. I don't know that they bought the creek. Can you buy a creek? Can you buy, can you buy like a creek? Now, it's a little piece of land that's like about this big and they, they do have that up with a little yellow thing saying for sale, so maybe they want that little land. But I don't know, based on, they told my neighbor a while back, this eminent domain, this is our creek, the city, so can you buy a creek? That's my question, number one. Number two, I want to know if it gets to flooding at my house, which one of my aldermen and aldermen ladies is going to help me haul all my stuff out of my garage because it's going to flood over there? That's a joke, y'all. But seriously, Mayor, I just, I just want them to come. And it's not fair that this creek, now, they tell me what's happening is, the two big ones come this way, it goes over past me, over behind Nelson Apartments, and it keeps going and dumps into the Kankakee River. That's what I'm told. I don't know. And now I'm told that I need to call code enforcement. That, that, I don't know, is that my assignment to call code enforcement? I'm just trying to keep the water from running into my driveway and into my garage. Can, can you help me, Mayor?
I can help clear all of it up for you. I can give you, after the meeting or call you tomorrow and give you all the answers you need. I can give you a call tomorrow or after the meeting and give you all the answers you need.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Patterson?
Kalen Patterson, I was giving some news today about my, my boss, JoJo Seisen, retiring the business. And one of the things that he's done so much for us as a community is bringing people together. I know we had Darren Steen, we have Mike Newman, who's still in it, and there's also JoJo. So we basically had a great foundation. If our elders are basically stepping down, somebody has to be ready to step in. And I keep petitioning myself because they taught me. So I know the way they can de-escalate situations, they can basically motivate people to do things, and that's become ingrained in my life. So I'd still ask for that chance and opportunity because with the stuff being taken out of his building, I'd love to have it put in a building where we could start teaching that in Kankakee. Because I'm, as a person that lives in Kankakee, it's sad for me to always be helping others and other communities but not helping my own community. So it's heartfelt that he's leaving, but I also know that what he's taught is a part of me and I can teach this to the community if I do have that availability. So I'd ask that consideration as well as everything I've asked prior to this.
At this time, we'll move on to item five, roll call. City council?
Jones?
Present.
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Cobb?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Navar?
Here.
Marzak?
Present.
Swanson?
Here.
Holly?
Present.
Ossenga?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Alon Marshall?
It's been a while.
12, present, two absent.
We do have a call. Department heads?
Kidwell?
Here.
LaRoche?
Here.
Rogers?
Present.
Landweir?
Present.
Sanchi?
Present.
Lopez?
Here.
Newton?
Bigash?
Present.
Nelson?
Here.
Beasley?
Here.
King?
Here.
Crosswell?
Brewer Watson?
Here.
Thank you.
Next is a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, May 19th, 2025. So moved, Mayor Curtis. We have a motion from Alderman Ossenga. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Holly?
Aye.
Ossenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
The minutes for Monday, May 19th, 2025 are approved. Next, we'll move on to item seven, petitions. Item 7A.
PB 2025-5-1, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit and a sketch plot of subdivision for a planned unit development on certain property located within the city of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois, at 250 East Station Street and 310 South Skyler Avenue.
Okay. Last planning committee, or meeting, they had a busy night and they've got a lot on the agenda here. So before we move on to item 7A here, Director King, can you give us a brief synopsis of, we'll call it the redevelopment of the project downtown?
Sure. I think we're all familiar with this, said 250 East Station Street and 310 South Skyler. There was a hearing at planning board for this project. It was, I thoroughly discussed and vetted, there are a number of conditions and also what are referred to as modifications or exceptions to the code under the PUD allowance. If there's any questions on any of those, please let me know. The planning board did recommend this project for approval with a unanimous vote of 6-0.
Thank you, Director King. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Byrne. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Holly?
Aye.
Ossenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Byrne. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Holly?
Aye.
Ossenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
I abstain to avoid a potential conflict of interest. Thank you.
Barron?
Aye.
11 ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Just so everyone knows, Mr. Lofton is here tonight if you had any questions or not, but this is a major hurdle for them to get this piece moving on for the downtown housing development. I think the next step is really in our court with getting the river's edge zone into place. Once they have that, they should be moving forward with their review of permits and plans, which is happening and some different things, and hopefully be moving forward yet in 2025, so. Next is item 7B.
PB 2025-5-2, an ordinance rezoning 777 North Kennedy Drive from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential.
Director King?
This was also on our May 20th planning board agenda. It is actually a request to go, for a single lot to go from C1 Neighborhood Commercial back to R1 Single Family. There's an existing home on the property. There were a number, there's a number of properties along this stretch of Kennedy that were rezoned at some point in time. A couple of them are still functioning as commercial buildings. I think there used to be a law firm in this house, but it's, it's being converted back to a home and being put on the market for sale. And it was recommended for approval. I apologize, hang on. It was unanimous. I just, I want to look really quick, hang on. We had a member arrive mid, mid-meeting, so all the votes were different. This one was by 6-0.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that allow for passages of rezoning tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Holly?
Aye.
Ossenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 7C.
PB 2025-5-3, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a billboard sign for a certain real property located presently bearing the PIN 16-09-34-100-033.
Director King?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to install, and to be clear, it's a kind of an old-fashioned billboard, not electric. It is only externally illuminated. It's not internal. It's not like the one that this, this applicant has one two lots down from this on a property and that one is lit and also I think it changes messaging. So this is a stat, this is a static traditional billboard. There's a number of conditions on this one as well, including that it needs state approval for being next to the highway. It also, oh, hang on. There's also easements on the property that are ours, storm sewer and drainage, so this, the billboard cannot be located in those either and will need to procure building permits with us as well. And it was approved by a vote of 7-0.
Thank you, Director King. This is, if you don't know, this is out at East Gate Industrial Park, through the east of the highway, behind several industrial buildings there. That is zoned I-2 out there.
I do have two additional things. I apologize. One is that there was a, like, a scribbler's error in the ordinance. It's on page three. There's a new draft version. It had a reference to an older ordinance with a landscape contractor approval that we did, so that has been updated by our attorneys. And then there was also something that was brought to my attention this evening that there was a finding by the planning board that was made reference to the QuickTrip billboard. And I did seek with the attorney, they don't think that it's a big deal for the council to still approve this tonight if they would like to. If there's any questions, I think you can probably direct that to Mike Sanchi.
So, so in your packet on page three, where it said, whereas the mayor and city council have determined granting the applicant the conditional use permit to erect, and it said, or it said landscape contractor shop, that was from an old ordinance, you now have a new copy that was passed out to you tonight. So on page three, it now says, permit the applicant to erect a billboard sign on the subject property. So it's just a typo that wasn't caught on Friday, but you do have the corrected version in front of you now. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make the motion.
Well, may I make that motion? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yacking, I'm sorry, excuse me.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones, or suspending the rules at this point, yes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Holly?
Aye.
Ossenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
11 ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
I had a question.
Oh, you want to, I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand. I'm sorry. Can we, go ahead.
Thank you. Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderman Noble. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
I had a question.
Oh, you want to, I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand. I'm sorry. Can we, go ahead.
Is this a lighted sign or?
No, this is, my understanding is this is not the digital LED sign that changes. This is one where they basically glue on the signage on a monthly basis, but it will be uplit with lighting at night so that you can see the sign at night, but it won't be a LED. It'll just be one of the glued-on...
Old-fashioned.
Pre-determined signs that are put up, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Noble.
Any other questions?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Abstain.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 7D.
PB 2025-5-4, an ordinance approving text amendments to chapters of the city zoning ordinance.
Director King, if you would like to go through this, one of those has been through committee several times and filed before the city council tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. It actually went to ordinance committee, I think, twice. Economic Development Committee a couple times for updates, Planning Board for hearing. It's a pretty simple amendment. It is, I would describe it as a pilot program to allow for urban farming, hydroponics, aquaponics, things like that, of that nature, inside cargo containers. This is something, we did have an applicant come forward that was interested in doing this on a property somewhere in the city. She currently has a cargo container that she purchased. It's like a, you buy it from a company called Freight Farms, and it comes like as a kit, and they can produce up to two acres of what you would normally have a product that would normally be produced on two acres of land inside this one cargo container. It's pretty incredible. So this would allow that type of use inside of a cargo container. It's specifically only on city property, subject to lease agreement, that would be approved by the city council. It just gives someone the ability to apply for this and come before the council to negotiate a location as well as the terms of that agreement as well. And it was recommended for approval by the planning board 7-0.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions or comments? Alderman Marzak.
There was quite a big discussion on this, and, you know, we separated retail cargo containers to the hydroponics. So this is, you know, one resident that is looking to have one cargo container that she can grow two acres, the equivalent of two acres of farm, like basil and, you know, lettuce stuff in that container. But I think it needs to be pointed out very clear that most of the committee members were opposed to any idea of residential. This is a pilot program, and that's why it's subject to a lease agreement on city-owned property. It's not, you're not going to see cargo containers, you know, set up over across the street. So I think it's pretty important that we make that clear.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Abstain.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. We'll move on to item eight, and that is Communications, item 8A.
Sorry. You're fine. The Dam Tap at 597 South Washington Avenue is requesting street closure of the 200 block of West River Street, west of Washington Avenue to the alley, to host wrestling at the dam on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, beginning at 8:00 a.m. through Sunday, June 22nd, 2025, at 2:00 a.m., with a rain date of Sunday, June 22nd, 2025, beginning at 8:00 a.m. through Monday, June 23rd, 2025, at 2:00 a.m.
Is there a motion to approve this street closure request?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Is there any questions or comments?
I have a question, Mayor.
Alderman Osinga.
Can somebody explain to me what wrestling at the dam means, what that's going to? I know on the surface what it sounds like, but what, we're going to have mud wrestling over there or something, or what?
I did take their form. I could probably tell you a little bit more. They said they were going to have like a wrestling ring, which I did make them turn insurance into me for, but they said it was family-friendly, and it was wrestling at its finest, I guess. They said it was family-friendly, so, if that helps answer your question.
Ask the question.
Is Ric Flair coming?
Enough about wrestling.
Is the police department okay with this? Hate to put you on the spot, Chief.
It's the first I've heard of it, but... I'm assuming, yeah, I think we'll be fine with it. I don't anticipate any issues. If we do, we'll handle it.
Okay, thank you.
There has been some wrestling events, I think, right across the street at the rec center and stuff before, so it has happened in the city of Kankakee, so.
You got to get over there, man, I seen this happen.
Any other questions or comments?
Better stop now while we're ahead.
Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Street closure request is approved, and probably a lot of Aldermen that are very interested in attending now to see what it all means.
Lance might wrestle.
Might be 12 ticket sales already done. Maybe 13 with the chief, so. Next up is number, item nine, standing committees, item 9A.
Economic Development for Thursday, March 27th, 2025.
Alderman Cobb's.
Thank you, Mayor. The regular meeting Economic Development Committee met on March 27th. Here at 5, the meeting was called to order at 5:33. There was a forum present. There was public comments made by a resident of the 6th Ward. Michelle Howard spoke about the need for assistance for families, single mothers who are experiencing fire, particularly feeds, with getting utilities back on. Director Watson did speak with her after the meeting. There were no presentations. Director Brewer Watson gave the directory report, and there were multiple requests for business license, as well as the report on business attraction and retention. This information can be viewed in detail online. An update was given about the project catalyst that Jeffers Downtown developed, and the new revised plan, as we just heard, is presently within the planning and zoning and the remainder of that timeline. Indian Meadows was, Indian Meadows update, a draft agreement was sent to the Alderman for review via email, with the incentives that were pre-approved, was to extend the present agreement, which was sunset to 2038 to 2040. Developers planning to build 128 residential units in five, the next five years. 169 South Skyler, the venue, there was discussion on incentives and where those incentives would come from, since it was not a TIF request. Motion was made in second to look into assistance in funding that business. And new business, as we had just learned, the storage container ordinance discussion, a brief discussion was made. It was still on the ordinance committee for further discussion. There are Alderman comments. A message we read from Alderman Malone Marshall about gaming license for the business on Hobby and Willow. This business did not survive the Hobby Street repairs. License is presented licensed and franchise. Alderman Marzak asked about the $25 home buyer incentive. The mayor informed us that there is a bank that is giving incentives. The city doesn't know if it does that. The meeting was adjourned at 6:34.
Thank you, Alderman Cobb's. Next is item 10, report of officers, item 10A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $695,532.95.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for the city of Kankakee?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the report of officers, place the money in the proper accounts and pay the bills in the amount of $695,532.95.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Is there any questions or comments regarding the report of officers? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
I abstain as to check 84048 to Joe's Automotive and 84051 to Kankakee Ace Hardware to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for the city of Kankakee are approved. Next is item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $363,688.15.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Any questions or comments regarding the bills for ESU? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
I abstain as to check 36434 to Baron Hewitt Oil, 36444 to Gordon Electric Supply, 36452 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 36462 to PSI Construction, 36465 to River Valley Pest Management, each to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for Environmental Services Utility are approved. Next is item 11, unfinished business. We have none. We'll move on to item 12, new business, item 12A.
An ordinance declaring certain property surplus of the city of Kankakee and the Kankakee Fire Department and authorizing the sale thereof.
I will defer to Chief LaRoche on this one. I do believe this was brought up at the last meeting a little bit, and so this has to do with our aerial equipment, but Chief LaRoche?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We're looking to surplus our 27-year-old aerial device. Late last year, we had to take it out of service because of serious maintenance issues. Since that time, we found that the maintenance issue would cost quite a bit to repair, more than the value of the vehicle. Be unwise to continue moving forward to get the repair, since we have a new aerial coming within the next year and a half. This vehicle is a 1998 Pierce aerial. Served us well for many, many years, but unfortunately, it's past its prime, and I think it's time for us to surplus it, and hopefully we can get some money for the sale to somebody who's looking for parts or maybe to scrap it for us.
And my understanding is we couldn't use this at this point without making repairs. It'd be a liability to the men and women of the firefighters.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron. Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Alderman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I think I asked one of the firefighters the other day, if we could use parts off of ours for theirs, and they said, "You can't do that, because I guess it would tear up the insurance," or something like that, you know? Because I don't know, if theirs match ours, I don't know, you know?
I believe we could probably sell it to a company who repairs other vehicles, and they can use parts off of our vehicle. But the thing is, is there's not many 1998 Pierce aerials still on the road that need repair. That's kind of a, that's where we're at with it, so.
Right. All right, thanks, Chief.
Any other questions or comments? I think the biggest comment will be the winter parade. Might have, might need to find a new sleigh.
I was hoping Alderman Marzak would put a little bid in for the vehicle. He'd get you a good price.
Easy now, two souls.
Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Item 12B appointments, we have none tonight. We'll move on to item 13 motions and resolutions. First up is item 13A.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of a bid for bulk fuel supply from Baron Hewitt Oil Company for the city of Kankakee.
This is our annual fuel supply bid that we have with the city of Kankakee. This year, you see in the packet, there was four bidders. We are enacting our ordinance tonight. It allows if a local company is within 3% of the lowest bid, that we can go with that local company. There was the... Before you is Baron Hewitt Oil, who was the second low bidder, but the difference between the first bid, the lowest bid, which is an out-of-town, out-of-county, and the local one, is 1/10 of 1%. So it was close enough that with them owning real estate in the city of Kankakee, paying real estate taxes, employing locally, we did enact our ordinance, and you'll see that in the resolution here, that we can accept the second lowest bidder for local reasons. And we figured 1/10 of 1% is worth it to keep some of the money right here, so. So we're asking for a motion to approve the resolution to accept the bid for bulk fuel supply from Baron Hewitt Oil Company for the city of Kankakee. Still moved, Mayor? We got a couple, who knows? We have a motion from Alderman Cobb's. We have a second from Alderman Ocinga. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Staying to avoid a potential conflict.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B.
Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and clerk to convey interest in and use of real estate located at 758 North Hammers Avenue in Kankakee County, Illinois, to the people of the state of Illinois Department of Transportation for highway purposes for the sum of $2,050.
So this has to do with... We'll talk a little bit at the end of the meeting. Last week, we had a meeting with IDOT in town. This is a vacant lot on the far north end of Hammers Avenue. It's kind of on a curve there. The city owns that lot. IDOT is asking for a small corner of that. It's very small, as you see. It's probably not even the size of... Yeah, if you look, it's probably not even the size of this chamber council here, that they need for redoing of IDOT. They had the appraisals done. This is very similar to what a lot of the neighbors are getting over there. So we are conveying this small piece, which is part of a permanent, and then there's also a permanent easement, and then there's a temporary construction easement, and they're paying us $2,050 in exchange for that. A fee... Okay, go ahead, Legal.
Sorry, so if you...
You want to put your mic down real quick?
This resolution is in IDOT's format. It's not the typical format that you would expect for the city. There's actually three components to this. There's a fee transfer closest to I-57, and then there's a permanent easement, and then a temporary construction easement outside of that. They're all kind of layered, one on top of the other. The depiction that is in your packet, you can, if you can make out the hash, you can see it. If you'd like to see a larger one, I have a copy, and the planning department has a copy.
So we'll still own the majority of the lot there, but it's basically the southeast corner is what we're conveying. It's clearly the start of the acquisition of land there, so.
Right. I know.
So the first two resolutions have to do with the conveyance. This has to do with the vacant lot, so.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution allowing us to enter into this agreement with IDOT? Still moved. We have a motion from Alderman Jones.
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B.
Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and clerk to convey interest in and use of real estate located at 1905 and 1931 East Court Street in Kankakee County, Illinois, to the people of the state of Illinois Department of Transportation for highway purposes for the sum of $8,800.
So this is almost identical to what you just approved, the vacant lot on Hammers. This has to do with the former international dealership that had burnt down at the corner of Court and St. Joseph's, and then the old bowling alley that we tore down. Part of the reconstruction would be widening of Court Street up to St. Joseph's there for the interchange. So again, as Legal had mentioned before, they'll be taking some conveyance of land. They'll also be extending their easement for right of way, and then there'll be a construction easement that's needed. One of the positive things that we have here, and I'll defer to the 7th Ward Alderperson's, that corner is a little hairy there. We were looking at spending some MFT money there at one point. I'm actually glad we did not. IDOT will be, I guess, City Engineer, they'll be basically softening that curve that allowed for, or easier for vehicles and buses to turn that corner when they're all said and done with the project, if you can elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah, they'll be doing a compound radius, so larger vehicles can make that turn more easily. We are looking at potential other, more cost-effective options when the city was kind of going to be on the hook for it, possibly going down to just two lanes. But now that IDOT's going to be widening that radius out, it should accommodate larger vehicles like fire trucks and buses, no problem with the left and right, dedicated only, so.
So this is... We're also conveying some rights to IDOT for this project, but it's also going to help solve some of our issues there, and they will be compensating the city of Kankakee per the appraisals $8,800 for this. And then they'll be doing the work. Any... Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Still moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Noble. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13C.
Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and clerk to convey interest in and use of real estate located at 1905 and 1931 East Court Street in Kankakee, Illinois, to the people of the state of Illinois Department of Transportation for highway purposes for the sum of $8,800.
So this is almost identical to what you just approved, the vacant lot on Hammers. This has to do with the former international dealership that had burnt down at the corner of Court and St. Joseph's, and then the old bowling alley that we tore down. Part of the reconstruction would be widening of Court Street up to St. Joseph's there for the interchange. So again, as Legal had mentioned before, they'll be taking some conveyance of land. They'll also be extending their easement for right of way, and then there'll be a construction easement that's needed. One of the positive things that we have here, and I'll defer to the 7th Ward Alderperson's, that corner is a little hairy there. We were looking at spending some MFT money there at one point. I'm actually glad we did not. IDOT will be, I guess, City Engineer, they'll be basically softening that curve that allowed for, or easier for vehicles and buses to turn that corner when they're all said and done with the project, if you can elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah, they'll be doing a compound radius, so larger vehicles can make that turn more easily. We are looking at potential other, more cost-effective options when the city was kind of going to be on the hook for it, possibly going down to just two lanes. But now that IDOT's going to be widening that radius out, it should accommodate larger vehicles like fire trucks and buses, no problem with the left and right, dedicated only, so.
So this is... We're also conveying some rights to IDOT for this project, but it's also going to help solve some of our issues there, and they will be compensating the city of Kankakee per the appraisals $8,800 for this. And then they'll be doing the work. Any... Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Still moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Noble. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have the final plans yet for IDOT. I think they're going to be doing another submittal, which we'll have an opportunity to review, because they are going to be removing and replacing the lights along Court Street. And we asked that they reuse the lights, because otherwise, the city would, you know, the city's got to be on the hook for that. So, since it's the city's street lighting, so we are going to have a chance to kind of review this once they give us another submittal. We're anticipating that to be happening sometime later this summer, so we'll have an opportunity to provide some input. But I know that's been an issue that the 7th Ward residents have raised in the past about visibility of turning onto St. Joseph's here, so we'll make sure that, you know, that it's addressed as part of these improvements.
In worst case, if we have to get involved, we'll get involved with something on the corner there.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13D.
Resolution authorizing the assignment of city of Kankakee liens on certain residential properties to the Kankakee Regional Land Bank.
So with the help of in-house council landwear, the Land Bank has identified some properties within the city of Kankakee that we don't necessarily own, is that correct? But we have liens against the properties. They have the ability to start some foreclosures or try to acquire those properties by using our liens that are there, and they'll take that on at their cost and their description. So some of these properties that are listed here, they've identified, these are vacant homes. I believe all of them are vacant. In fact, they are all vacant homes, that we would assign the rights of our liens over to the Land Bank, and they would start the process of getting control of these homes to either get them into developers' hands to fix up or different things there, so. We're starting with, is it seven total tonight? Okay. With this, with the Land Bank, and see where they go with this next year in trying to take care of some of our vacant and abandoned homes. We're looking for a resolution to approve assigning our lien rights over to the Kankakee County Land Bank. Still moved. We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Any questions or comments? Alderman Dern.
In the Exhibit A, for two of the properties, there's a reference to a certain dollar figure in liens and an injunction. What is the injunction to do or to permit?
Generally, the injunction would just be because it was uninhabitable. I don't actually know on that specific property if it was because it was uninhabitable and we were getting people out, or if they refused to get a rental license. Sometimes we brought injunctions for that reason. That won't hold anything up with the Land Bank, because we can go to court and release that anytime we choose to. We wouldn't do that before we hand it over to them, though, because it's another tool that can be used if necessary. So if they start the process and they need that removed, we can certainly do that.
So this is an injunction to prevent habitability at this point?
At this point, yes. It would... There's a court order saying no one can inhabit that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to make reference, I said seven properties, it's five properties.
Right. So, Mayor.
Alderman Jones.
As we were discussing, 755 North Freysing pending demolition, when are we going to see these coming down? That'd be some of the question.
So we've got, I'll let in-house council talk about, we have lots of properties that have demo orders on them.
Yes.
Just because we have a demo order on them doesn't mean we have the financial capability of knocking them all down. If you remember when we talked about the night, one of the things that we're working on in our budget is I'm trying to put in a demo line item.
Yes.
In conjunction with DPW's budget, and in conjunction with funds that come from ECDA's office, to hopefully get more properties taken down that we think need to be taken down. Sometimes, though, when there's demos on them, it doesn't mean they need to come down. We've got an example here that you probably will see coming to the next meeting. A property that the city owns that was scheduled to be demoed, and we have a developer who said, "No, please do not demo it. I'm willing to invest $80,000 to $90,000 into saving that home." That saves us several thousand dollars from demoing it and keeps it on the tax rolls and transferring that, so that's... Each one of these, we have to look at individually. My understanding is, anything that the Land Bank has offered here is, I don't believe their goal is to demo any of these. Their goal is to get them into hands and be rehabbed and not demo them.
Definitely what I wanted to bring up, too, because can we find investors? Because, you know, we get a lot of heat in the ward, because houses have been sitting... Sometime when the conversation comes to us, it would be like it just became vacant a year ago. Some of these have been vacant for years. Could we aggressively also look for investors that would want to invest in the community? Because we do have a few houses that's pretty bad.
We have a lot right now that are looking. Sometimes it's getting the house, control of the house.
Okay.
So sometimes it can be vacant for two years, and the taxes have been sold on it. We don't have the ability to get it till three years' worth of taxes pass.
Okay.
We have a particular house on South Chicago Avenue that we're very interested in getting control of, so we can demo it, because by demoing it, we believe we can stabilize that entire block.
Right.
Problem is, we have to wait another 18 months before we can get control of it. There's just, there's procedures and all to go through. That's why some of this, we're getting into the Land Bank, because they can start doing some of that workforce and freeing up some time for the city to do other things.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Just Alderman Marzak.
Just as hot as the real estate market is right now, people are paying insane prices for properties, so I think this is a great direction, great move.
In-house council, anything you want to add to this, or?
Well, just a comment on the demos versus renovating properties. We have had a lot of properties renovated in the last couple of years, and I don't have a list of them, but I could get one together at some point. There's a lot more going on, I think, than people realize, because you see the bad, and sometimes you don't see the good, but we are having a lot of houses renovated, some that are on the demo list that we're taking off because they are, in the eyes of the developer, renovatable at this point. And so it... I know it would be nice if we could aggressively look for buyers, but we don't own these houses. So it's a little hard to aggressively look for a buyer to sell them, something we don't own. So, you know, we can get a demo, we can, you know, get an injunction, but that does not give us the right to sell that house. So as much as we can, when people ask us questions, we try to lead them to houses that might be available, but we don't broker the deals, because that's not what we do.
I will say, we're kind of in a time that's a little bit of a catchphrase, too, but it's good for us as a city of Kankakee, as it was mentioned by Alderman Marzak. Homes are getting very expensive. You're seeing it because our EAVs are growing up. That's a positive thing for our community. I also know sometimes it prices out some people, and that's a difficulty with rents and everything else. But you hope to buy a home, and you hope to turn around 20 years from now, and it's worth at least double the value, if not three to four times the value. It's getting to a point now, in the past, and it wasn't that long ago, I remember sitting on the CDA committee six, seven years, eight years ago, when we would put $50,000 into a house, and we'd have to set up for $30,000 less than we put the money into it. Now with the cost of housing, of just finding a house that may be $180,000, $200,000, an older house in the city of Kankakee that needs a lot of repairs, people are finding that they're willing to put $100,000 into a house, because they know they're still cheaper than trying to buy an existing house. And for the first time, it's starting to work in our favor here with our older stock of housing, so it's a good time. The perfect storm, in my opinion, is starting to happen. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is executive session. We do not have a need for one tonight, so move straight on to item 17, city council member comments.
Mayor.
Alderman Lewis.
Just like to announce that code has been moved from June 19 to June 12 due to the holiday.
Same time, 5:30?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alderman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, last Tuesday night was a very informative meeting for all of us in the 7th Ward. Got a lot of information. IDOT did a tremendous job bringing everybody that could help the constituents with every question, and I believe a lot of the things were answered last Tuesday night. This week, last weekend, I was in Antioch, I went up 294, and I saw the actual walls going up, and I saw the process. And it's actually, if somebody wants to see the process, if you've got time around 294, just head up, and you'll see how they are putting down the pillars and all of that, and it goes together pretty quick. It just, you could see them slipping them in, and they're roughly about 15 feet in the air, and that was kind of interesting, you know? I was kind of eye-gawking the other day as I was going through, I said, "Oh, so there it goes." So it's not really a hard process, but if you ever go, if you've got that much time, because it's a mess on 294. But it is a mess. But you could see that, and it was very, it was very, very exciting to see what will be coming to the community. But I think that I like our logo design a whole lot better. I think we're going to beat them on that. So I was impressed with that, and I wanted to say that tonight. And also, I want to thank Mr. Lopez in advance for his pot filling all around. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. That's between me and him. Mr. Lopez is going to help us with our...
He looks a little confused right now.
That's me and him on our stroll the other night, you know, so. But I told him the other night, he said he was going to help us, but that's all I wanted to say tonight. But again, thank you for coming, Mayor, and all of your administration that was there it has answered a lot of questions that I don't have to go to other people to ask, but just know what's going on in your city, it's really easy to use also, because I'm not computer savvy, so, just try it, everyone, try the city app, thank you.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor, we have budget committee meeting a week from tonight here at 5:30, among the topics will be, of course, the budget, thank you.
Any other Alderman comments, Alderperson comments? Alderman Marzak?
Everybody else spoke, might as well, nobody brought up the Sunset Stroll that was this weekend downtown Kankakee, and it was a pretty amazing turnout, I, if you weren't there, I mean, there's a little video online, but I mean, it was pretty, pretty well-run event, and safety was at the utmost, so, it had the barricades, concrete burst, and went off without a hitch, I believe.
Any other Alderperson comments? Department head comments?
I believe they did finish the last of the paving today on the side streets on Hobby Avenue, they've probably got a couple weeks worth of pavement markings to do, because there's a lot of pavement markings on that road, but I believe they have them all laid out and intend to start them where they're permitting tomorrow, they wanted to wait for all the asphalt to be done, but, I mean, to answer the question, the road is ready for a parade, for sure, so that I can assure you of, all the asphalt's done, there's only a very minor amount of concrete left to do, and then they still have the topsoil and seating and blanketing to do, but for, for all intents and purposes, it's pretty much complete, other than the pavement markings, I, I think they're working through some signage right now as well, so, I know everyone's going to be, no one's going to be happier than me for this project to be over with, I can tell you that.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, maybe not, but I will be one of the happiest, so, but I appreciate everyone's patience, I know it's been a long project, it was very complicated with a lot of utilities to move, and that's never comfortable dealing with that many utility companies, so I do appreciate the council's patience, I think it'll be a great project, now that it's coming to a close, and looking forward to, to using it, so, thank you.
Any other department head comments? Okay, I just have a couple, I will concur with Neo, I think, if we're not first and second, I'll be right there, right behind Neo, waiting for Hobby Avenue to get done, but I went out today and looked, and you're right, it was, I think they almost had one more intersection to do, so probably that's all done, if you look, all the markings for when they're going to put the striping down, it's been laid out, so it's, it's getting very close, we're just, still need a little bit more time, but I think for Juneteenth, we'll, we'll talk with City Engineer, but I'm sure, as he said, we can have a parade ready, so, maybe not open to public yet, but we'll at least have a parade ready, so. We did talk just a little bit, I'm not going to really elaborate on it, we did have a very good meeting, I thought, last week with IDOT, I thanked them for, when we requested that meeting, for them to come out and meet with the residents, in particular the residents that live on the east side of Hammers Avenue, they brought in six people beginning with, with another five people, they had over, you know, they had over 11 people there to answer questions, hand out numbers, to start working with, it's a very confusing process if you've never dealt with land acquisition from a governmental authority, it can be very frustrating, but I think we're on a path now where everybody's getting the answers that they need, and if they don't, we'll, we'll at least point them in the right direction. I do want to thank Alderwoman Swanson, thank you for running the meeting two weeks ago,